All right. Good evening to everyone. It's August 3rd, City of Mount Vernon Council meeting to order. Not aware of any changes to the agenda we have in front of us.
Don't we need to move J two to G two? Or do we just do it? What is doing there? Do we only make a change or make a change?
That being said, I will move approval of the agendas presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item in Communications. Anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Ms. Boggs, Kathy. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen year end library report.
So, all right, I'm Kathy Boggs, Public Library Director at Cole Library. And in your council package you have our year end report. We'd like to do that at the end of the fiscal year for us to let you know all the things that we've been doing. This year, what I thought I'd emphasize is we've worked a lot of partnerships this year. So we've worked with the Girl Scouts in our area. They meet in the library weekly and together we had a Nancy Drew program. We're still partnering with both of the banks, Hills Bank, does our summer reading program, the Mount Vernon Public, or the Mount Vernon Bank. They do our movies, our early out movies and our summer movies and then our movies for adults who are home during the day. And we're also, this year we're partnering with the Master Gardeners and they come in the spring. And so all of these partnerships provide a lot of programming without a lot of cost for the library. We also are providing programming every day in the summer, Monday through Thursday, for children who are at home during the summers. And I'm here to answer any questions you have. Those are just my highlights and we want to thank you again for all of your support.
Well, I'm just curious, on the early literacy, you had a count on there that I thought was great of nine hundred and ninety-four attending story hour.
Yep, that's what it is.
I'm just curious to know, do you have any idea, you know, if you separate duplicates, how many families or separate children are served?
It's different every time. And then, so I don't, I don't, no, no.
Okay, that's okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, and that includes everybody in the room. It's not just children, that's what we turn into the state library. Yeah, so yeah, it's a lot of children.
It is.
That's great.
You can program Monday through Thursday through the whole summer. It was a huge endeavor, so well done.
Thank you, we're exhausted by now.
School starting is actually a break for you? Is that really what it is?
It really is, yeah, it is. And then the college students come back and get two weeks and then they'll be starting again. But the neat thing about it is we have so many teens who are babysitting during the summer. You know, after that first week or two, the excitement wears off. And they have somewhere to bring those kids every day. And it helps both the teen babysitters and the children in their care. And that was something that we hadn't really thought about until we saw it happening. So a lot of people are served in the summertime with that program.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll see you at budget time. Thanks Kathy, you bet.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the council minutes from an August nineteenth council meeting as well as approval of record license for T D D and chili cup off.
And move approval of the consent agenda presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, move on to public hearing with the first order of business is a motion to untable. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing on the ordinance amending Article nine-ten, parking for personal and recreational vehicles of the zoning regulations of the municipal code of Mount Vernon. Now open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one.
I put out, I wrote a note for you all, I'm Dick Rose, I was on the council, I can't remember if I was on council or on the zoning board when that was discussed, it was, it was a few years ago. But we did, at the time, I don't think there was really any provision prior to that. And it was that group's feeling that they shouldn't be parked in somebody's front yard, they shouldn't be parked there for long periods of time. And that it shouldn't encroach on a neighbor's peaceful use of their property. And in some cases, I think that does and it's, you know, it might impact one homeowner or not impact the other homeowner. But I think that the council has to be mindful of that issue when they're approving any change to the ordinance. I don't have one, though I plan to have one. I don't really have any skin in the game other than, I think there's lots of neighborhoods from time to time that get impacted by this issue. And people aren't going to come to you and say, this is a problem. So you have to work with the mindset that there are people that it might affect that aren't going to come to you.
You have a pro last?
Yes, more or less.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
You bet.
Is there anybody else? Name and address Spencer.
My name's Caleb Billingsley, seven oh one, Fourth Avenue, Northwest. I'm not actually sure what amendments you guys are going for, for parking. I know that I received several letters regarding my camper parked on my side lawn because it wasn't in city ordinance or up to code. I do ask the council to be mindful for families who do own RVs to store them somewhere else as an additional cost. And when we are already going camping and it's for the families and Mount Vernon is about families and this is a family activity and making it not an ICEOR, I understand. But there are other things that we can be focused on besides trying to, like, I have a two thousand eighteen Coachman, it's not ICEOR. It's parked on the side of my yard and on the other side of my house. But I was told that that's not up to code. Well, it's in my driveway. So, just because it's not far enough back to be back from the road, it's, I mean, there's three campers on my street. It's three families that it impacts that have memories with these. I don't, I mean, I'm assuming that most of you have children. I don't know if any of you do camping. But it's a break, it's to take away from all the electronics, the busy hustle and bustle of life. I know for our family of six, we're at the baseball field or soccer field or, and that came from soccer practice, Monday through Saturday. I mean, we'll go camp at Palisades just to get away from it, just to get away from the busy life and just unflog and be with one another. So I do ask that, do you take that into consideration? That it's an added expense if we have to store it somewhere else? So is it really that difficult to be parked alongside your house on your driveway? How many of us ICEOR? There's going to be, you're not going to place everybody. That's just man kind. Somebody's going to have a complaint about something and they can choose your battles, I guess.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Mr. Delancy?
Jay Delancy, five oh nine Scobie Road, Northwest. Is this just campers or is this going to lead to other things like John boats, snowmobile trailers, motorcycle trailers, people's trailers for hauling personal stuff because they don't have a pickup? It's strictly campers.
No, I didn't know.
There's a definition that says recreational vehicles including motorhomes, camper trailers, parentheses, including fifty wheel trailers, full dump campers, boats and boat trailers, parentheses, see definitions.
It's also talking about personal vehicles, so if you haven't read through, if you haven't read through, then recommend you read through it first.
All right, but that's all, man, this is not going to do nothing with snowmobiles or John boats or bass boats or fishing boats and I mean, is it, is it going to be changed down the road?
I can, the, the answer to that question is, this specific amendment is for recreational vehicles. Those apparatuses that you're talking about are covered elsewhere in the parking regulations. So this particular ordinance that we're talking about tonight doesn't necessarily affect that, but it, it's already covered in a
I know it's something about it, but wasn't there mostly that you had to have it on gravel or hard surface, not in the grass?
Correct, but this, this particular amendment has to do with recreational vehicles in its entirety. So if, if I can, real quick, I'll explain how we got here. So if you look at G, location of parking, and actually that red is supposed to replace all of the black there in A. I don't know why the tracks and change didn't do it, but we had conflicting sections within this ordinance. One said that you could only park within your front yard twice in a thirty day period for a maximum of seventy-two hours. It's impossible to police for us without going out there and taking video of a property every day to prove that it was in that same thirty day period. And then it goes on to, it went on to say that parking is permitted in an all-weather driveway in the front yard without any conditions. So as staff were to take this or if we had to take this in front of a judge, we had two conflicting basically sections of the ordinance. So what we asked Planning Commission to do is either say yes or no and give us language to fix this. So what they're saying is parking would be permitted in an all-weather driveway within the front yard setback seasonally from May first to October first. But it cannot be on public driveway. So where we run it, it issues where people park their campers and it blocks the sidewalk. It's a little harder for individuals that don't have a sidewalk, but that's kind of the main reason behind that segment is to make sure that you're not blocking public use of the sidewalk. To, I forgot your name.
Caitlin.
To Caitlin's comments, you can park in the side yard, you can park in the rear yard, but you can't park in the setback portion of that. So there's actually two portions of your yard, you have the house and then you have what you would consider your side yard, but then we have a, what we consider our side setbacks. So that hasn't changed at all. And the reason for that is if you're parking in that side setback, then you're pretty close to your neighbor at that point. So I think the purpose of that ordinance was to make sure that you weren't encroaching on a neighbor. So your side, you might have twenty feet in your side yard, for instance. Seven feet of that might be your side yard setback. So that seven feet can't be touched, but the rest of your, your side yard could be. Does that make sense?
I was mailed a diagram saying, there's no place on your property that you can park your RV. Sorry, like, mm, that's.
It's a corner lot.
All right, so I would have to look at it based upon these changes, but that's, that's how this all came about, so that's what Planning Commission looked at, was we had two conflicting portions of the ordinance. What they came back is, and basically have said is, from May first to October first, you can't park in the front yard on a driveway as long as you don't block the sidewalk.
So what about October second through?
Then they have to be gone. You have to store them somewhere else. So what they're trying to say is, we want to work with people that do use them during the seasons that they're typically used. And then you're going to have to figure out what to do with it after that point. But this becomes easier for staff to enforce.
As opposed to the first portion of that with the seventy-two hours and twice every thirty days and all of that.
So you're adding those dates right now, is what you're trying to do?
Correct. May first to October.
So if these folks decided, you guys can't give a little if they put some type of cover over it? You know, to kind of disguise it, camouflage it, and they have the hard surface under it? And it's out in, you know, their side or their back? I get not having it in the front yard.
The only problem that I would say with that, Jay, is, is for everyone that doesn't write, there's somebody that does it wrong.
That is always going to be that for humans.
And so, well, but, but I can't write an ordinance, you know, that covers that one wrong. And that's the problem that we run into.
But my thing is, is that, like, I'm agreeing with her, but then you're sitting here taking people who spent thirty, sixty thousand dollars on a unit and then tell them they can't basically, then they can't afford it to put it somewhere, they basically have to get rid of it.
Well, right now, no, not, you just have to store it somewhere else. And I'm not doing anything to it.
But I'm saying, that costs money sometimes.
Well, I know it does.
And it gets costly sometimes.
Well, prior to that, though, to be fair, you had to move it, you could only have it for a three day window, every, twice every thirty days.
Yeah, but they would have scooted back an inch or two, wouldn't they?
No, 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 no. You could only have it there for seventy-two hours, twice a month.
Yeah, it's still said within the front yard setback.
So this is a lot more freedom as far as allowing it to be there without it, you know. We do have, I will say, we have properties in town that have two located there and they're problematic for us on the nuisance side of things, so people, and I apologize, but people have moved them in and tried living with them. And that's hard to get out once it's established, so like I said, there's no way, Jay, without writing an encyclopedia to cover everything that we've seen so far in this, but this would loosen the regulations slightly to give you more freedom to at least park it there during the seasons in which you're using it. And it still had, you still have the side and the rear yard. You just can't be in that setback.
And it can't be on grass.
Yes.
But a lot of, a lot of people's drives actually go into the setback.
It does.
So if you have after drive, if you've got fifteen feet, seven feet of your drive is in setback, so you do stand it on its side.
Well, no, to me, it's just, it's one of those areas that you can't. But again, the whole, the whole reason for the setback and, and the separation between buildings is so that we have capabilities of fighting fire. The ability for a fire not to jump from one location to the next and having a motorhome parked in that setback that close means it's not any different, honestly, than having a building addition because it's as combustible as the rest of it. So again, there's reasons for not allowing it in that side or rear setback, but based upon these regulations, I'm welcome to take a look at it. I've never looked at your property, so.
I even offered to pour a slab in my, because I'm on a corner lot. And where I have it, and I understood that it was parked on grass and that looked tacky. It just, where we could put it and then it snowed and we didn't have time. But I offered to pour either a slab of concrete or gravel to have it on there. And I was told no, because the side, because the sidewalk easement would be blocked or there was some excuse of why I couldn't even do it that way.
I can take a look at it for you. Like I said, I don't know if this is going to help you or not.
It's all we can do.
But it sounds like in, in the way that even without changes, it was an issue regardless. So this activity of changing this is not.
Not hurting now.
In fact, it won't, it won't put you any worse than you already are. It's just a, a situation probably that needs to be worked.
I will tell you that Heather is here too and she was at Planning and Zoning Commission. I do not believe they wanted to open it up here around. They were very specific on the dates, so.
Did they give any reason for that?
Generally speaking, the, the.
Yeah, they, they thought that this was a really nice compromise because it is really restrictive to not even be able to park in the front at all. Or only like a, some, like, certain days of the week or, you know. Most communities do allow you to park seasonally at least, so they thought that this was a nice compromise. It still kind of kept it Mount Vernon standards of, you know, during the winter and the fall of, of keeping it off the property. So they, they really liked it.
Thank you.
Well, when it comes to, I understand why you don't want the camper to pull onto the, where people are walking on the sidewalk. Do we have something for that for cars? Because I constantly walk and there's cars parked right across the sidewalk.
Yeah, you're not, you're not technically allowed to block the sidewalk at all, but people have to call in and tell us that you're there.
All right, anybody else that would like to address the council? Close the public hearing.
So I just want to be crystal clear, the, in section G, A, portion A, where we're, which is really.
Red is supposed to replace black.
Okay, so all we're left with is starting with the red, parking is permitted on and all, okay, gotcha. And then C is completely, because it's dealt with in that portion.
Correct.
D becomes C, go ahead.
Good, everybody?
Yeah.
All right, all right, entertain a motion to untable. And we got F two. Yep.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance eight dash nineteen dash twenty nineteen A, amending Article nine-ten, parking for personal and recreational vehicles of the zoning regulations of the municipal code of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Again, I don't know if there's anything else, anything more to add than the conversation that we just had, but.
So just so I'm clear, thus, can you explain the term front yard setback?
So you have what is considered your front yard, side yard and rear yard. You also have what is considered your front yard setback, rear yard setback, side yard setback. See, we don't define a maximum typically on your yards per se. In certain areas, what traditional residential we do, but, you know, if, if the required front yard setback is fifteen feet, for instance, and you sit twenty-five feet back, that distance between the fifteen feet, twenty-five feet is considered your front yard, but not part of your front yard setback. So
And in that scenario, the front yard, the setback would be measured from the curb or?
Your property line.
Okay.
Typically about a foot behind the sidewalk. Now, this particular exchange does not talk about front yard setback, it just says you cannot be on the right way. It does discuss, not anything or many, but the other portions talk about your side yard and rear yard setbacks.
And the front yard setback seasonally from May one to October one?
So you can encroach through the entire portion of your front yard as long as it doesn't cross the right away line, so.
During May.
During May.
And for general definition, public right of way would be an alley, a sidewalk?
Alley or a street right of way. Typically your sidewalks are inside your, um, street right of way. Just inside.
So seven months out of the year, I'll have to find somewhere to park there. There are items. I know that can't be cheap.
Well, I would have to think that when you're making a purchase decision for something that large, just like you do for making a car or even your kid's bicycle, part of the process is figuring out where you're going to put it. I just think that that would have to be a.
Bicycle and cars. But the thing about it, I do want to reiterate, so that date is only for the front yard. So if you have room in your side or your rear, you do not have to pay to store it. You can store it there. You just can't have it in the front yard beyond October one up until May first. In our understanding, when we discussed this with Planning and Zoning was, when they first originally did this, it was not to, I mean, they gave you the seventy-two hours twice every thirty days, more or less telling you that they did not want it in the front yard period. The, the issue that we have is, is it possible to enforce?
So in the case of a corner lot, is, is there the definition of a front yard setback that allows two?
Yeah, unfortunately for a corner lot, they do have two front yards.
Yep, okay.
And they're both defined.
Even with no sidewalk there, you know. I mean, it's all about compromise and fortunately it's tough to hit every case. But it has obviously gotten better in terms of where it was, it just wasn't being enforced.
Is there something in addition that could help clarify or make it easier for those property owners that do have situations where they sit on the corner? Or in a difficult lot?
The only issue that I would say with that is every corner lot's slightly different in which one do you pick, you know.
Well, you would pick the one that the, the males deliver on the side. That's usually your front yard and then the side yard is one without the, the male service. That's what I would, I would call that side yard.
I want everybody to understand, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate, but which neighbor do you pick?
Right, right, yeah.
Is the only, I mean, I don't, from staff's perspective, we just want to make sure it's easier for us to enforce the will. I would say after, like I said, from listening to members of Planning and Zoning that have, were on there when this was completed, I think the intent was to make it very difficult for you to park A, park B or anything in your front yard period. That was the intent of the original ordinance.
In doing so, though, they crafted something that was virtually unenforceable.
Well, so I think the, when we talked about this, the original intent they said was that because C fell after, or what had been C fell after A, they felt that it would kind of supersede one another. And unfortunately, if C wasn't a subset of A, then it doesn't. It's just, if they're on the same playing field. So that was the challenge that we were going to find, you know, from a legal standpoint, was just a, a minor error in where we were situating verbiage makes a huge difference when we're trying to enforce rules. And, and I, I, I need everybody to understand that if you receive a letter or if we reach out to you, it's typically because somebody has complained. So that's the unfortunate part of where, where you're at is we, we only really investigate these matters when we receive a complaint. And so that's the challenge that we have is there's another party to this. That obviously isn't in favor of certain things, so we're really good either, either way, we just, we need to, some direction. I think Planning and Zoning, as Heather said, did their best, they felt like, as far as meeting somewhere in the middle.
Tom, did you have something you were going to say? Just basically that I respect the, the different iterations that this ordinance has gone through, through multiple years, through multiple councils and multiple administrations. And I respect the thought process that our volunteer boards, whether it was, or just for Planning and Zoning, however it got us to this point, got us to this, to this iteration of this particular this article in the, in the zoning here. And I think that I'm going to make a motion to approve the first reading and see what happens from there. So I'm willing to move.
I'll sign it. Any comments? Roll call please, Sue.
West.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Rhonda Bush.
Yes.
Leesler.
No any problem. I don't know the, you guys know where I live, I, I live on a double lot. And so part of my house goes onto the corner double lot. So if I wanted to, if you want to, if you would want an ICEOR, I could actually pull a trailer right into the corner of my front and I'd be out of the setbacks. And so this wouldn't cover that, so I could park that sucker right there and it would look bad. So I'm just saying, there's.
Hey, I don't know if there's a really easy answer to, you know, there's a lot of law enforcement. And Eric, you have that large ass garage.
All right, we're going to move on.
I guess, if I could, I would encourage anyone to read what the adjustments are.
And work with.
And work with Chris.
No, it's fine, no, good, we're good, good. All right, next item, public hearing on the ordinance creating a public use overlay district for property locally described as eight fifty-five Palisades Road Southwest. Now open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Anyone close the public hearing? Move on to ordinance 932019A, creating a public use overlay district for property locally described as 855 Palisades Road Southwest. Person anything to add? I know there wasn't much in the package.
No, this is just our property, the wellness center property. So the nice part about the public use overlay district is that it doesn't change the underlying district, so there's some flexibility for us as a public entity, but also some surety to individuals that live next to it that, you know, another commercial entity isn't going to move in, shall decide not to. This would be one of three that you're going to see. The public worksite is another, and the new police station would be another, once we take ownership of it, so.
Anybody have any questions, otherwise we'll entertain a motion? We'll move approval of ordinance 9-3-2019A, permitting the comprehensive plan of an official zoning map to create a public use overlay district, Bill Lester Burris family community wellness center.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right, we're on to ordinance 852019A, pending the White Plains Plan Unit Overlay District identified in ordinance 1272019C. This is the third final reading. And again, there was anything new, right? Really? For this one?
I'll move to approve the third final reading.
Second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Herman?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
All right, next item, Resolution 932019A, approving no parking zone designations within the city of Montverne, Iowa. Should we break off on this? We received requests to modify, we have complaints of visibility issues for traffic turning on or trying to turn on to Highway 1, and for traffic coming off of Highway 1 on the 7th Street Northwest into 100 block. So staff took a look at that, went down and checked the area. There's parking allowed all the way up to the stop sign, closest to Highway 1, which was causing a lot of the problem in that location. So when we looked at the whole standpoint, I contacted, there's only four residents in that block that are actually impacted by the streets. I reached out to every single one of them and got, and gathered their input from there, and what, how they use that area and what they would do. And everybody seems to be in agreement with this, as far as the map you have in your, in your packet. The north side of the street is already no parking all the way along that side. The south side, there's no parking sign, the no parking areas are already marked there in red as well, there's an alley. You can't park in front block and alley, obviously, from there. So what we'd be looking to change is the mark, areas marked on your map in yellow, pushing it back 45 feet from the intersections on both sides to allow traffic that's merging or coming off of Second Avenue onto 7th Street or Highway 1, back and forth, and creating a little bit more open space. All neighbors are in agreement with that?
So what's in red is already no parking?
Red and will stay prohibited. And those houses there in the north, they both have in-home childcare, so there's a lot of kids kind of running around. Three, uh, three out of four of the houses run daycare.
And most of that yellow on, on like east side, it looks like it's parking anyway.
The yellow is all parking right now, so that would be green right now. Um, I'm proposing to change that and make it that red.
So they still would have the green areas?
The areas, yep.
Toward the center of the block.
Correct.
I mean, inside of that, it looks like they got paying parking.
There's probably enough areas for five or six vehicles yet, even if, even with these changes right now.
So after you sent the letter dated June 28, you did not get any?
I've met with all of them, showed them this exact picture that you're looking at, they're all in agreement of that. And again, this is a nice compromise, because the initial request was absolutely no parking. Which obviously that wasn't. Which limits, you know, we get over to the Highway 1 side, the two residents there, they can't park on Highway 1, and then we wouldn't be able to allow them to park on 7th Street, and it would be problematic.
So again, good compromise for sure. I mean, anybody that drives on that, I mean, because I'm, I live a block away from that, so I mean, it's, it's tough when there's cars coming, there's, because there's been times where there's been eight or nine cars parked on the, on that other side, so it's tough to get through there. So I think it's a good compromise.
Thanks for getting your letter out early enough, so they have two lots, whatever, to consider.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
All right, I move to approve Resolution 9-3-2019A, approving no parking zone designations within the city of Montverne. I'll second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
All right, now we'll jump down to motions for approval to J2, which is discussion and consideration of receiving bids for the sale of $2.260 million, general obligation refunding capital loan notes, Series 2019. Chris?
So the, the next three motions, this motion and then the two resolutions, are all dealing with the same refunding. Maggie from Spirit Financial is here, she did hand out the, um, hand out the results of the bids today. Obviously, still laughing about the interest rates at 1.6%. We're going to realize the savings of almost an entire bond payment, like a year, it's worth a bond payment, so, and I finally get rid of these taxable notes.
So lowering the interest rate from five something to?
Yeah, it, which is kind of a, it's a bit of a misnomer, because we sold these as taxable, and then we were getting part of that interest rate refunded to us. So couldn't really tell you what the overall rate because of changes, our reimbursement changes every year, but.
But it has been changing.
Not really good.
Less and less, right, exactly. So that's.
Yeah, entertain a motion, and we can move on to the resolution.
What are we doing?
I'm just approving, receiving the bid of two, uh, to four Northland Securities for the sale of 2.26 million general obligation capital notes.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll hop back up to Resolution 932019B, directing the sale of $2.26 million general obligation.
Maggie would be 2.25.
It will be actually 2.250 is the revised amount.
2.250?
Correct. We're, we're a little downsized it.
Oh, yep, yep, okay. So with that, I'll add the 2.25 million general obligation refunding capital loans. Is there anything else for?
And it is the revised of 1.6079.
That is correct.
Close savings of 4 nights, pretty significant. It's worth going through the process.
It was a good process today.
Yep. And we helped our financial advisors out, Pete, so that scored twice.
You're setting the bar.
Which is really.
You're setting the bar pretty low tonight, for, for the rest of the refundings we have. So I move approval of Resolution 9-3-2019B, directing the sale of 2.25 in general obligation refunding capital notes.
Second.
Scott, the second, any comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Weesler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
All right, next item, Resolution 9-3-2019C, authorizing the redemption of outstanding general obligation taxable capital loan notes, Series 2019B, Build America Bonds.
So you're calling the old debt.
Just chuck one money around the table.
Yeah, so you had to, you had to take the first resolution, now you can do this resolution to call.
Only in politics do we go, right?
It's complicated.
Can we just write a motion?
I just have you know that the attorneys did all of this, by the way.
I will make a motion then. Resolution 9-3-2019C, authorizing the redemption of outstanding general obligation taxable capital loan notes, Series 2019B, the Build America Bonds, dated 22nd, 2009.
My second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Herman?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next item, Resolution 9-3-2019D, approving the Department of Transportation Street Finance Report for fiscal year 2019.
This is the annual report we put together, probably the biggest highlight is, gives us an idea of what we actually received in road use tax funding for the year. This last fiscal year was 582,111, slightly better than what we project. I'm always pretty conservative with road use tax, because it fluctuates every year, so this year, this last fiscal year, we came out well, because we didn't budget for all of those dollars, so.
Just, and that's putting you on the spot, but do you recall what we had budgeted for?
So about $40,000 less, average about 118 to 119, um, per person. So we get anywhere from, so the projections would have been $120 coming from the Iowa DOT, 120 to 121.
Per resident.
Per resident. And then I drop two or three dollars off of that to base the fluctuation per year, so. Typically, when you see our budget, you'll see anywhere from 100 to 18 to 119. Now, I will tell you, the DOT projections go up for two years, then back down a dollar for a year, and then back up. So it, it really don't rhyme or reason, um, but this has kind of been tried and true for us. So this doesn't include that 10 cents. Several years ago, the state passed 10 cents. This does include that. Our share of it.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, to give you a rough idea, before the 10 cents, we were probably estimating somewhere around 98 to 99 per resident.
Makes a difference, no?
Yeah, it does make a difference.
So this is basically just telling the state how we use them?
Correct. So you have all of the street projects that were either ongoing or finishing up that are listed. But yes, it's our justification, what is in our fleet. Everything that we need to let DOT know that we're using it for.
Well, I was entertain a motion, anybody have any further questions?
I move to approve Resolution 9-3-2019D, directing the DOT U Street Finance Report for fiscal year 2019.
My second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
All right, motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Anybody have any questions on what is presented?
I would like a motion to approve the claims list.
Are we second?
No, just to put the, additional claims, nothing else.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number nine, Lester Burris family community wellness center.
This pay application is in the amount of $517,231.22. I did put a note in there that I expect to see that they push back, and we're okay with this. I think everybody's kind of come to terms. So as of right now, we're recommending you in favor of this pay application, so. You have any questions?
Anybody?
I move approval of pay application number nine in the amount of $517,231.22 for the Lester Burris family community wellness center.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Next item, discussion and consideration of change order request number three.
This is a small change order for the wastewater treatment plant, 2019 improvements, $2,137.16. I did show you the pictures of the void and the exposure rebar on the clarifier, so just ground settling underneath the clarifier over the years, plus the exposure rebar, it's time to get those taken out of its small mind, so.
I think motion passed, change order requesting three, and 2019 wastewater treatment plant improvement project, total link, $2,137.16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number three, 2019 order case order.
Uh, this is for $126,454.54. Again, they're moving right along in this project, if you've been by there, there's a lot of equipment that's exposed. I did also note that we did not get good news on the screw pump, so expect to see that coming forward. And what we're thinking about doing is, uh, they're both likely in the same condition, so we would do one screw pump with this group, and then five years from now, when we have to move forward with the rest of the improvements at the wastewater, we would move forward with a second screw pump, so we can have one down while the other one is operation. More or less, I hit the metal with a hammer, just tested, and a lot was falling off, so.
Yeah, we were expecting that, right?
We were, it was kind of like anything else, you were hoping, did not, but expecting it to happen, so.
So just so unclear, though, that's not what this change?
No, this is just a pay application.
Because Andrew's is literally five years off, you said?
Yeah.
The worst he moves on these, I guess.
Yeah, so we got the DNR to give us a five-year reprieve, so by five, it'll be five to seven. So we have UV disinfection, that was part of our permit, and then nutrient reduction, which was part of the permit. All total, we will have somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.6 million worth of improvements to do at the treatment plant. What I've tried to do is coincide some existing that was coming off, so that we could not burden the, the property owners of Montverne all at once. Hopefully, by allowing that window, we will kind of get some of these bonds to coincide. There's going to be two or three years of overlaps, at least, but it's better than eight to 10.
What will this end?
To.
The screw, to replace it by usual additional.
As far as from a cost, if we were to do it today?
Yeah.
Um, I'd have to ask any of the people right now.
They didn't give you one for the one that's damaged now, that we're replacing?
I haven't seen the exact cost yet, no.
Is it 20,000, 50,000?
Some number higher.
Add them together?
Yeah. And this is, is this the thing that, that works?
This is the long, it looks like a long auger.
Right, and it just works everything. Don't they make them out of stainless steel? I always thought they were made out of stainless steel, but. Obviously, the audience is following a party. If you hit it and stuff comes off, it's not stainless steel.
Emily wanted to be here, and she apologized, and she's actually out of the office for her today, so it's not by her choice.
She's not arguing?
We can ask them in the next pay application comment. Well, she will be here to discuss this change order, because we'll be at change order coming.
Anything else, otherwise entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the pay application number three for the wastewater treatment plant improvements in the amount of $126,454.54.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next item, discussion and consideration of rental rates, Lester Burris family community wellness center.
So this is kind of the last piece to our facility puzzle. The rental rates were provided. Matt and Sarah have done a considerable amount of work, working with the school district and surrounding areas, looking to see how we would be as compared to others. They've met with other residents, Mrs. Kuchar, I believe. Who the, I don't want to boundary, I'd say she's just a party planner, she does.
She does large scale events, planning, and so forth. And we've run some concepts and ideas past her as well, and sort of being an expert in the field. We've compared, done some comparisons to some facilities in our surrounding areas, and these are the rates that we came up with, we felt it would be affordable. We wouldn't have to be a member to rent the facility, so we wanted to make sure that community members still felt comfortable coming in, even if they weren't. So we wanted to make sure that the community members still felt comfortable coming in, even if they weren't a member of the facility. We're currently just looking for approval for these rates that will set us into the next step, which would be doing more multi-room rentals, all-day facility rounds, those kind of things. We don't want to proceed with that big picture yet until we get the small scale concept done. So that's kind of why we're here today. The school district, we've had conversations with the school district, so it looks like the school district will start charging for their facilities as well, starting the second semester of this school year. They'll have a bigger bubble to coincide than we will. We're bringing the facility opening and we're charging their facility that had been free in the past and now we'll be charging for their facility. So we're working together to come up with what would be a very economical rate to charge. And we're going to charge the same thing across the board for the spaces that we have.
I was going to ask, is it going to be the same?
That will be the same, that's our goal, yes.
How that works, because I would say there won't be members or non-members for the school district, how does that work?
Yeah, they're, they'll be probably utilizing the member, or the non-member rates.
It has to be seven cents.
Matt, I think these look really reasonable and I think it was great that you gave a break to the members for the rates. The only thought I had in reading through this is going to be your challenge of making sure the facilities are available to the people that are paying those monthly fees. You know what I mean? There's that balance between using and gaining revenue from those rental prices and providing the regular paying monthly people what they're requesting.
Absolutely. So one of the next things we'll come back to you with is the schedule, how we schedule the facility. We have certain timeframes that the facility can be rented out and certain timeframes that cannot.
Great.
So giving you an example, between five-thirty and seven o'clock, we're not renting the gym, the turf room, the rock wall.
Kick out.
Not new spaces because they're going to be member or open opportunities. So again, there's nothing worse than going to a facility that you can't utilize at the most popular times, or those times that we're just naming. So we don't feel it would be fair for us to rent out that facility during the most popular times when you're going to be coming in as members to use the facility. Even on weekends, we have certain segment of times that you'll be able to rent the facility and certain times that it'll be open and available to members. Obviously, as we open this building and it'll be new to us, we'll still tweak and modify some of those things and we'll understand patterns and trends. But right now, this is what we're going with as far as the best case scenario that we feel, to give the best balance for the community to use it, the members to use it, and special events.
That's what's great about having the data from the system that you'll be using. It's not just what you think is coming to the door. You will know for sure based on those counts.
Yeah, it will, it will define it by space, by the number of hours that it's utilized, the number of hours it's not utilized. So we'll be able to have some really good reports with the system that we have.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you talked through that.
Yeah, we have talked through that, thank you.
One other item is it will not, the entire building cannot be rented out more than once a month. So we aren't turning our backs on club tournaments or things like that, but we are basically saying we are not going to become your home base and allow this to be closed every weekend, so.
And I'm sure you would publish those as far in advance as you could.
Several means, social media, our email list within the database, and then obviously internal, they're doing that as well. So we plan to get it word out in advance. I'll give you an example of some of the policies that are coming forward. So we have large scale and small scale rentals, is what we call them. Anything that's a small scale rental would be a hundred dollars or less. You can rent and reserve that four months in advance. Anything that's a large scale, which is renting two or more spaces, you would have to rent, you can rent up to a year in advance. So the smaller ones, for the small birthday parties, the small little, I want a gym for an hour here and there, you can rent those up to four months in advance. And so we're following the same principle and scheduling policy with the schoolhouse. They rent four months in advance. So they, there's a, I'll show you the schedule when it comes to you the next meeting. You start in January first, you can start renting for April first.
A rolling schedule.
A rolling schedule, yeah. So for example, we know we're probably not going to be in the building until probably December or January this year. So we'll probably start rolling out October first, the opportunity to rent the facility. Once that comes, you can be able to rent starting January one. Then the new cycle will start January one, where you start to be able to rent for the April, April, June, July, or April, May, June, July, those kind of things. So the school district does that with all of their facilities and we're looking at doing the same thing. So again, we're kind of consistent and following the same principles of spaces. Then with large scale events, so if you want to do it for a graduation party or a large family reunion or whatever, you want to rent three or more spaces, then you can do that up to a year in advance because that's a large scale event that you're going to have to plan for and we realize that. So that's kind of how we've proceeded with this. And you'll see again with the rental regulations that we're putting in place. And Chris is right, we've talked about only having one weekend out of the month that that whole facility would be rented. And then we give plenty of notice to our members.
Probably only one day on a weekend or one whole weekend?
One, one, well, two days, we'll just call it. We call it a weekend, but it could be a Saturday and then a Sunday the next weekend. So we're going to pull work on some of those policies that we're going to overdo, so you can see those.
Insurance for group rentals, is that something you're pushing or is that part of the contract? We'll get ahead of that before we open the doors.
Insurance, they have to have it from a liability standpoint. So we are currently working on a policy as it relates to alcohol. We're talking about the fact that you would require security if you're going to have alcohol. There are two different options. One, if you bring your own alcohol in. The second would be if you have catered, there's different insurance options for both. So yes, there will be an insurance requirement. They will vary depending on what type of function you're having at the facility itself.
Number of people, dollar amount, number of rooms.
The alcohol though is where it fixes, probably where the insurance goes. If you're going to have a birthday party there, are we going to require you to have insurance? Yeah. As long as the birthday doesn't have alcohol. So, so there will be events where you're not required again to have insurance. That would be covered under our umbrella. There's state law that gives us a decent amount of protection as long as we're not negligent in the operation of the facility. So like I said, the alcohol brings a whole other dynamic to it. And there's going to be some other things. If you're planning to go past operational hours, you're hard affected with staffing to do that. I mean, it's going to be more expensive to do certain things at this facility because it's more risk to the city.
Thanks, Matthew.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
So it's said, entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the rental rates as presented for the Lester Burris Family Community Wellness Center.
All second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion items, the pool committee.
So these are the names that we have thus far. It's fifty-fifty. It's staff to resident. I'm assuming most of the staff that's on here are residents as well, but I really would like even more people if possible. Like I said, every time you guys put something in front of myself and my staff, you know, we want to get to the end game. Having as many people sitting at the table, having a discussion about what we should do with our pool facilities moving forward. You know, it presents a couple of options for me. One, it gives me an opportunity to talk about the cost of operation on a basis that hopefully will make sense to everybody sitting around the table. But two, let's talk about feasibility, whether or not it makes any sense to add to the wellness center as phase two. And if it does, you know, what does that, what does that look like? And if it doesn't, Matt and I have discussed this on more than one occasion, Mount Vernon cannot have two locations. You can't afford to run two locations. So this committee has, I think.
Unless the committee becomes a fundraising party.
Well, if they can fundraise for operations, that'll be the trick. But the one that I would note is, is Jackie Infobrick has not said that she wouldn't be on there yet. We're trying to get a member of the adult lapsuit group and.
So there is someone on that group that is not on here that I confirmed before the meeting, Deanne Rexer.
So I was just going to tell you that Deanne Rexer had confirmed. And we would welcome Jackie as well, had she, if she decides to, I won't turn you away. But we're trying to get as many groups involved. Tom Stevens is both with the school and he works with the swim team.
Annie Hocker at one point had told me she was interested and I was trying to get her confirmation. I've reached out to her, I just haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
But she specifically said she was interested because she has kids that are on the swim team.
Okay. So listen, the reason for having this on here, Dan and I, is to say this is what we've done so far. Please give us more names if you've got them. I would like to hold a meeting with this group either at the end of September or the first part of October, just to get this thing kicked off and ready to go.
Remind everybody what their main three focuses are, Chris?
Main focus will be, the million dollar question is, do we maintain an outdoor pool or do we move to the indoor?
Isn't, isn't the point, inform that, to inform them of costs?
Yes, so there's positive and negatives to both. And my job will be then to explain what those are. But I definitely want the conversation to be open. Maybe there is something out there that I'm not aware of that could be looked at. Again, the issue is always operational. We lose on average about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, give or take. That's for four months out of the year. You can take that time forward and a minimum, an indoor facility is probably going to lose that dollar. So it'll give me an opportunity to kind of educate why we were talking about this. I've also had conversations about with individuals as it relates to the management of the existing facility. And if we would have gone another way, maybe we could have had an indoor pool. And the answer is that it's not that simple and there's reasons for that. So for me, it's about educating this group. For this group, it's about bringing a true recommendation back to both Park and Record and the City Council. And then, like I said, the million dollar question at the end of the day is, do we continue to look at an indoor pool? Or do we almost permanently table that option and look to our outdoor facility? Because our outdoor facility has needs, significant needs. We're dealing with water loss, we're spending way too much on chemicals because of the water loss. So we do need to answer this question one way or the other. And then depending on which way we go or what recommendation is, then it's, it's what needs to be done. If it is in fact the outdoor pool, what do we do? Do we try and fix what we have? Do we try and expand what we have? There's a lot of questions out there and I think if anybody out there is interested in being a part of this group, I would highly suggest either way. If you're pro indoor or pro outdoor and just want to meet once a month to have a discussion, that's really what it's probably going to boil down to initially.
Will this team also look at how we currently operate from a model standpoint? As you and Matt both know.
Correct.
Been not very happy with no kids at the pool and the pool's open for four hours.
Yeah, so as you and I have talked, our current operation has more or less four sessions per day. So we only close one session. We rarely close the pool or make the decision to close the pool for the entire day in one city. So we don't end up saving that much money by closing for an hour or two, whatever it ends up being. So yeah, but I think operationally, they kind of go hand in hand. It depends on whether or not we stay with an outdoor or we go with an indoor. Because Iowa City, for instance, has an indoor facility. It's only open, it only opens half of it. So they have what I would consider kind of a workout, a rehab type scenario. And then right next to it, they have an diving board and a lapsuit pool. They only typically open one or the other if there's less than ten people in the facility. So the whole thing will be looked at, it needs to be looked at. As Nick would tell you, he cringes every year that we have to try and open that thing because right now we tend to hobble. I'm going to forewarn you, we spent, my man at four one to Maryland, we spent more money at that facility this year because I was disgusted with the outdoor bathrooms. So we made some changes to those, we spent some dollars and for me, that's. Yeah, that's the biggest issue as, as your administrator is. Our goal is always to try and better Mount Vernon and that is the one facility in town that is kind of my vein of my existence right now. It's just one of those that I struggle when I'm over there because there's so much to do.
Well, this would be queer. When you said you, when the million dollar question?
It isn't a million, it's a multi-million dollar question when you're talking indoor pool. It's not a million.
You're talking.
Six to eight million probably for an indoor pool. And that's just a.
Just so we know. And you could do a lot for an outdoor pool for a lot less than that, so I'll just put like two cents there.
And I apologize to councilperson Herman, who we just stuck you on there since you've been part of the personal conversation.
Which is the best way to get somebody on the committee. Just name them, turn it in my head. They're like, well, that sounds.
So we're stuck and then maybe we can kind of continue. There can be two of you on there. Like I said, my goal is to get, you know, twenty to twenty-five people to truly just sit down and have a conversation.
I think this is a great idea, I'm really impressed that you're doing this. Getting the facts put in a concise fashion so people know what we're going for or not.
And we can now focus on this specifically. So the wellness center is no longer about should the pool be involved with wellness center or not. It's going, it's under construction, it will be opened. Now we can focus on the pool and what we need to do.
But whatever you do or discuss or decide upon, whatever comes out of that committee, what's going to be so important is how that is communicated to the rest of the community. Because I think that's a really, really important piece of it.
Yeah, I think you'll notice too that there are a number of people on here that haven't served on the Board of Commissioning before.
Yep, that's good.
Kind of nice to see some of you up.
Yes.
Question from outside is, is the new Marion, will I see whenever they grow pool?
Will it?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the old one in and the new one will out?
Good, I think this will be good work.
Yes, I agree.
Something like this has a lot of passion behind it.
That does.
For sure.
We're not going to have a twenty-year commission.
You?
Okay, thank you. I just got done with it.
Not unless you fire me because I couldn't handle it.
Anything else on the pool committee?
No.
Good. All right, round of reports. The only thing I have, twenty-eighth of last month, I have representatives from Cedar Rapids International Economic Alliance. They were very interested to learn everything that was going on in Mount Vernon between the housing developments and the rec center and the bypass. So they were very interested in us kind of learning more about their program. So I invited that individual to our October seventh council meeting. Chris, I don't know if that's been finalized yet or not, but.
Uh, no, because I haven't started it, but I have it noted in the file.
So more than likely, Ron, the former mayor of Cedar Rapids, is a gentleman I met with Corbett, who will be here October, October seventh to kind of, like I said, talk through what that would offer and who would be interested in joining the alliance. And then, so it'll be up to obviously this, this group to make that call one way or the other. But at least an opportunity to learn more about what they do. And Chris and I chatted about it. We feel it's a great opportunity. But obviously you guys can make that call at that time. Anything from council committee?
So the Housing Commission met right before our council meeting today. There were fourteen applications submitted for the low-income assistance process. Two are in the process of being confirmed for selection for those funds. I guess what I would encourage council to think about is obviously there's a significant interest. And so perhaps we want to consider that as we look forward to budgetary funding, et cetera. We also did have quite a conversation about continued interest that we hear about in low-dollar housing and the availability of it and then corresponding then with the expansions going on over by the school as well as with the scope and development. So just, just know that we're talking about that as well.
No easy fix.
No easy fix. We did share with the Housing Commission all of the dates for the Highway Thirty bypass meetings that are forthcoming so that we can get their input because a large part of that whole development is geared at housing, et cetera, et cetera. So the Housing Commission is not just low income or low, you know, need. It is also what is. what is going on with housing in general, so they're encouraged to attend and give in there as well. Okay, then I got a second thing. CDG is in the process of putting together a committee to put together an application for the Great American Main Streets. Margaret Stevens is the coordinator for that, and, and if anyone's interested, I am as well, but if anyone is interested in helping prepare that application, I'm sure they would turn you away.
Awesome.
I did represent the Mount Vernon City Council on the, I took advantage of the invite for the Siltland County Trails Association for the Mayor's Bike Ride, and finding out that I was from Mount Vernon, there was a lot of interest from the city council members from Cedar Rapids about the Inurban Trail, and from that organization, it was obviously really biased, and wanted to know, oh, you're from Mount Vernon, what's the interest on that end of the, of Inurban? So, there was a lot of interest in that. And everybody else could bike it, I ran it, so, that's all I had to pass on to that, so, anybody can bike it, eight mile ride. But, a lot of interest in that.
Anybody else? I don't know if anybody wants to follow the time on that, or not?
Well, I do have one announcement, we may have seen it in the paper, that we, through CDG, we're also hosting the Cornell Lunch Buddies Program, which is sort of the graduation of the Lunch Buddies Program, pairing elementary students with Cornell students, and the new program is to pair Cornell students with members of the community, with family members, so that they can, you know, once a month, spend time with families, families in the community, get to know them, and, you know, be better absorbed into our little world here.
That's a good idea.
So, who's coordinating that?
That would be Joe Jensen, contact Joe at the CDG. There's a, there's an online application for families, and also for the Cornell students, and we're going to go through the process of matching based on preferences of students.
Good idea. Anybody else? First?
The next solar power hour is September tenth at six-thirty here, and then, the other handout that Maggie wasn't on the agenda, is of course, the tip report. Just wanted to say that I think what you guys have done over the past three and a half years has been incredible, we've gone from, I want to say eleven bonds, down to what we currently have, seven, but in three years, we'll be down to five.
Chris, can you remind everybody, how many housing permits do we have new, for the two of those?
Last I counted, when I drove around both neighborhoods, I think we were at nineteen or twenty.
So, it's definitely taken off.
I think the other question to ask, especially in the housing development that's in, on the scope and development, is what has been sold?
I can't speak to either one, I do know that two have been, for sure, have been sold, but I don't know how many others. I think there's at least one or two that have signed up for utilities of the other development as well, so, yes, even though there's twenty homes going out, I mean, twenty families, but I think the interest is starting to pick up now that both subdivisions are kind of fully moving.
Anybody else have anything? No further business, may you stay in the chair?